This meeting has been called in regards to the very unfair and unjust treatment that we've received from the Waldershire Council, while under their control. I sincerely believe that by forming a pressure group, we can greatly improve the status of Lightning Ridge and the other people. Our purpose this evening is to form an association that will express with one voice the many different problems facing Lightning Ridge today. As individuals, we can achieve very little, but associated as one in a pressure group, we can bring much more force to bear from relevant authorities. I therefore propose the following motions to constitute our agenda for this afternoon. One, a vote of no confidence in the Waldershire Council's control over Lightning Ridge. Two, the formation of a ratepayer's association. Three, the objective of those, of those that are on the table. Four, the election of a committee. Did everyone receive the little letter in your bill from the Shire? A message to the right payer. Did you read and understand it? What were in it for?
I haven't read it.
The third paragraph, further expenditure cuts required that towns and villages take over maintenance from their own town. Shire will carry out sanitary and gardening services. How many received the sanitary service in Lightning Ridge? That's a good answer. The second last paragraph, even after increasing the rate to the maximum permissible yield and the drastic expenditure cuts allowed mine, 1983 will still increase council deficit by a quarter of a million dollars, bringing the deficit at the end of this year to half a million dollars. Even though if we do pay every cent, let's say we owe, we are further down the double debt line. I have a little note here, taken from the council wedding authorities of May 1982, a financial report. Now an item of ninety thousand dollars extra for interest has been found which was not previously accounted for. Yet a major part of this ninety thousand dollars is incurred because our loans programme was unfulfilled last year. However, it was all in last year's estimate. Why then does not the loan repayment fund control our overdraft interest? The timing of this is particularly bad. The loans we have raised were being handed before the end of June this last year. Hence, one repayment will be made in council financial year on the 1.2 million dollars raised. The interesting part is that our twenty-one percent rise in rates just about raised our interest bill. And had it been presented to council as such, what would our estimates have been? This is very careful of the following. Had such an error been found in private enterprise, the senior staff and the board would have been sacked. That's from the President, from the Royal County Council.
Off the note to the rate payer, from the first word up to the last. It'll end me, it'll end me some people having credit. So make it understandable to them and read especially the first paragraph.
May I suggest that you form your ratepayers' association first? You can hardly put a vote of no confidence in if you haven't got a ratepayer's association behind you. You're quite back the front. You should have your ratepayers formed first, then you can put your vote of no confidence in.
We're all ratepayers, we're all ratepayers.
Yes, but you must, you must form your association first and you can send it in as a whole.
I agree with that.
Before, before you go any further with it no confidence, why do not we have the council investigated? Where, not only our money, where all the people's money went? Because ninety thousand, I heard you remember?
That's true.
Something, they didn't even know they had it.
That was only the beginning.
But they didn't know they had it. That's lies. They know they've got it. Who was the bloke that picked it?
Well, you have to start from scratch here today now. We must form an association. And it's not just up to me, it's up to the associating that you elect.
Let this, let this, let this is association and then we'll go ahead.
1982 was a disastrous year for council, with a projected deficit of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately. This has altered council position from a surplus of two hundred thousand dollars on 31st December 1981 to a deficit of a quarter of a million dollars at the 31st of December 1982. I just read the second, sorry. Budgeting for 1983 required drastic measures. There will be no capital or construction expenditure out of rate revenue for untied bonds. Works of this nature will only be undertaken with a hundred percent grant from the government. And the last paragraph already written by us for three, ladies and gentlemen. Council will continue to monitor its 1983 financial strategy. And with prudent management, it is envisaged the deficit will be able to reduce in 1984 and the years ahead when work programmes may expand. Now, to the elected state committee, forward the mail to the local council. We're all ratepayers here, in Lightning Ridge, with four hundred and seventy-seven. There's a four representative here tonight of the people that are here. I did not mention you. You have the guts to come along and force your opinion. We have to speak for the rest of the town unfortunately. It is the people that are here tonight by good life to put a vote of no confidence in the Waldershire Council and go from there. Are there any objections?
Mister Chairman, I'm here as a ratepayer, not as a councillor, don't get me wrong. Uh, but I'd be loath not to say some of the things that I know have gone on in council. And it's not my experience as a Waldershire councillor, it's the experience I've had over the years in public life. Don't move something you can't make stick. Because if you move a vote of no confidence in the Walder council, it's going to go off to Sydney. The Minister for Local Government, if you're asking to investigate, it's like police investigating police. Because it'll come back to the Waldershire council to be policed. My advice to you is to move something you can make stick. And a censure motion in the way that the water was handled, water supply for this town was handled, can be made stick. Now, what you read out there was very, very true about what happened in May 1962, uh, May 1982. But you must remember that when that comes back to the Waldershire council, they're going to say, yes, but since then, Mister Baker's been removed. Uh, we've done everything we can to fix that anomaly up. The Minister for Local Government's going to accept that explanation. But if you make it specific about the fact that in, I had an argument with a lady councillor the other day, and I'm not going to name her because she's not here to defend herself. But she said in council, the people in Lightning Ridge must remember that they're paying for their water supply at 1983 prices. I said, lady, they don't mind paying for their water supply at 1983 prices. What they don't like is the fact that we paid for one water supply scheme in the early sixties. Another one in 1972 when the Department of Public Works and the Shire council didn't forward plan and bungled it by putting down the wrong pipes. If they were paying for one, they wouldn't mind. They're actually paying for three, and that's where the crux of the matter lies. And there's a censure motion there that you can make stick in the mishandling of it. But I don't think that you can make a vote of no confidence stick, it's going to bounce back to you. Because it's like police investigating police, they're going to investigate themselves, so they're on line.
Well, also this paper, one good friend, we've got council members up in the group, so.
About the pipes we're talking about, and the wrong pipes. Uh, when the pipes were put down, they were put not in the proper sockets. As you know, the black soil moved all the time. And from the time they were put down, the black soil has moved them and made them move.
It's time that people were told why they happened. I've heard this everywhere, I just remember.
No, I know, it is a fact that, you wonder why.
I think it's time that it came out, and I've got to be very careful in the way that I explain it. But what did happen when Jack Baker was suspended, the council thought they had enough evidence to sack Jack Baker. I'm not going to say they did have enough evidence, I said that right here and now I can add a color. They thought they had enough evidence. And they would have gone to a local government tribunal under section 99, which was the section that he was suspended under. And under section 99, all you've got to do is prove that he was negligent, and he then is sacked. But the Local Government Act has been changed, that he can, he first appealed under section 99, but when he got a pretty good barrister in Sydney, he found that he could appeal under section 21, which means that it goes to arbitration. And if it goes to arbitration, he can still be found guilty, just as guilty. But the judge in arbitration can say, he was a good and faithful servant for thirty-four of his thirty-five years, I am reinstating him. So the council were in a position where they could have won the case and had Mister Baker back. So they had to make a decision. Uh, it was going to be heard in Sydney instead of Walder. There were twenty-one witnesses. The court costs alone were going to amount to forty thousand dollars over three weeks for twenty-one witnesses. So they had to make a decision there and then whether they spent the ratepayers' money to go on with the court case that they couldn't win anyway. It was a test case, there's never been a case under, under section, under section 21. Every council's capitulated and allowed the person to resign. And that's what, what happened in that case.
Right, yeah, that, that answers a lot, Peter. But the fact is, if you had taken, would it not have come out that there could have been somebody else crooked on the council with Mister Baker? I mean, it could have, if it went there, I'm not saying there is.
Whilst I'm on the public podium, I'm not going enough to say Mister Baker was crooked, you can all draw your.
No, I'm just saying, there could have been somebody else there, but the council was covering up.
You can draw your own emphasis. But I was disappointed first that there wasn't a full and open hearing.
That's right, that's what I think.
Because I believed that there could have been a few more fish in the trap.
That's right, I think, this is why I think we should have a vote of no confidence.
But your chairman, with no confidence, is there a possibility of what I just heard to them being investigated? Now, the federal government can have a royal commission. Why cannot we get their books?
That's exactly.
And investigate them.
And if we don't start now, we never will.
Yeah, well, don't, no confidence, because there's some innocent men there. Catch, catch the ones that are the ones investigated. Now, I would move that, investigate the council. By who? Well, I don't know, but I think it could be supplied, it could be supplied.
All right, I'm going. I'd like that, Peter. Could I speak on the motion against, could I speak on, when I'm voting against the motion? Like, wait, I don't think we're voting for the motion, but I'm not going to, I'm not going against it. How, what are we going to shade? Who is going to put a motion of no confidence in the council? I think we should have, first things first, let's have a ratepayer's association first. And then by all means, as a whole body, put the, the motion of no confidence.
Because we are all ratepayers.
But we're not an association, we're just a job low and deep real, we're just a few little people. Let's have the association first.
Excuse me, how many signatures does your head on the petition?
Uh, Rob Chamsall, there's two hundred and twenty.
Two hundred and twenty, well, you've got the association form already. According to the petition, you've got enough members to form the association. That's your strength, that's your strength. That's all I've got to say.
Right, Chris. Paper, I have a paper here, come on, we'll play on, we'll get it, Chris. Come on, the paper was signed, now you, get right here.
Press, sorry. You're moving a motion, you haven't got a secretary up there taking any notes, so you're not actually moving a motion because there's no, no damn record of this whole thing except the video tape. Number two, Peter Prender stood up, and he said, don't vote a no confidence in the council for one reason, because you've got police investigating police. Okay, it's councils investigating councillors. It's a silly, silly idea. If Peter, who is a councillor, who knows that, you know, you can do it by, all we're bitching here is our water rates. We're not bitching our general rates because they're the same as Walder and all over this.
We're not going to pay, we've got to pay the sewer to, we don't give a shit.
Okay, fine, that's part of water. Okay then, so you're bitching sewerage and water, well then start a sewerage and water investigation. But why a general, a whole general thing when you're paying the same as, as Walder is anyway? And just one little thing, and maybe none of you want to believe this, you have read, you read that piece paper, the paper with the rates, and it said that they had a deficit of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if you look in the records of Waldershire, there was four hundred and six thousand dollars not paid in rates last year. Now, you wonder why they didn't have a deficit. And I'll tell you something else, ninety-seven people in Lightning Ridge didn't pay their rates last year out of five hundred and five. So you've only got four hundred.
That about corroborates why they didn't.
That counts a lot. Of course it does.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, we're lying if we're going to pay for somebody else.
No, I'm not asking you to.
How much do they spend back in Lightning Ridge?
None.
Look at the streets. Oh, wow, there's over three hundred thousand dollars spent back in Lightning Ridge over the last year.
There was a hundred thousand.
If you could go in the council and have a look on the records.
We're having enough over the period. We inform the local association, the papers again.
Seventy-seven said before, for this, that we paid sixty-eight dollars a year for sixteen years, for the fairness park. Now the council didn't put that money on, but seventy-seven people paying here they've had. Paid sixty-eight dollars a year for sixteen years, the council didn't put it on. And you asked the council, the last five minutes, you said, this is your last opportunity to take it with you. And the people are paying, right, nice, go away, please. So they've paid me sort of sixty-nine dollars.
Seven?
Yes.
Yeah, five hundred. Give me a second.
Fair enough, we need a president. Can I carry to you, Josh?
Well, call for a chairman, the call agency, please.
All right, I'll call for a chairman. Who will be chairman?
My grandeur, eh?
All right, I'll remain chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll stay chairman, what about a president?
I'm not a president.
Well, who will be president of the Ratepayers' Association of Lightning Ridge?
I'd like to nominate Peter Bruce. When the chairman's finished, you're on. Now, you're on the chairman for the strength of the might.
All right then, I, Dan Bruce, will be president. What about a secretary?
You ask the nomination, you take your vote, please.
And gentlemen, please, are there any nominations for a president of the Lightning Ridge Ratepayers' Association?
I have a vote, Simon Baggot.
Two seconds left.
So you must vote for him, please.
Oh, that's. Look, we have not continued by here. I'd like to nominate Peter Bruce as gang member and as president. Oh, yeah, that's some.
Is that secretary yours, Chris?
No, that's president, we're taking nominations just for the president currently, yeah. The first nomination is for Simon Baggot was nominated by Clara Petrovic and Secretary Joan Robinson. We always think we'd like him to be president, please put their hand up.
How many nominations do you have?
I have, I have a second nomination of Dan Bruce, nominated by Chief Cesswork and appointed by Chris Flambert.
Is there any more nominations?
There's no more nominations.
Well, just bring two members, both of us.
Oh, did you vote for the nomination of Simon Baggot?
What do you think, Dan, have a good change?
Yes, Simon Baggot, please stand up.
Yeah, have a son, just vote for him.
The other is a favor of Simon Baggot, and the other one is Dan Bruce, or Peter Bruce, Dan Bruce. He was sitting at the top, he's standing at the bottom. Yeah, it's Dan Bruce. Well, it looks like Peter has the job, Dan, Dan has the job. Now, we're taking to the floor, nominating for the secretary of this association.
Would you like to decline?
No, I, I decline, I've got too many other things on my mind.
That's the second thing, now we're seeing, I feel, you're happy to see. Um, can you, could you count down a show? Well, it's not. We, we should give that light to the place.
Sorry, hold on here. Clara Petrovic as secretary. Who will second that? Clara Petrovic has been nominated, did you come on?
I'll nominate for.
It's here, here, I second that.
No, I decline, thank you.
Any more nominations for the secretary? Yeah, yeah, that's good. Nomination for traitor for the Lightning Ridge Ratepayer's Association.
Have you voted for it?
No.
Traitor. Who will carry the money?
I'll nominate Carol Dye.
Come on, come on.
One on two.
Ethel Jacob.
We need that traitor. Many Graham, I nominate Many Graham as traitor. Come on, we need, we need that traitor.
No, no, I can't say. Take it up. Who is coming up? Yeah.
This'll do. Who votes for it, who's on the telephone, and who's not? Who's got the vote for the right vote? Well, I would prefer helmet length, if you're not here to talk. What about you, Willie?
What do you think?
What about you?
What do you think?
Okay.
Look, I just said, I won't be here. What about you, Jack? How about you?
You're a man. You're a man.
That's a favorite of mine.
What about my school? I nominate Mary Bryant. Is there now interest in this vote?
I nominate Judy Ward. What about you?
I nominate you. Who?
Jack Silman.
Jack Silman. Is Jack here? Is Jack Silman in the audience? Yes, that's everybody, try and nominate, thank you. All right, I nominate Anna Collins. Please, I'm sorry. Is the general president? Is there a seven or a five? For Lightning Ridge Ratepayers' Association, I'd like to put a motion of no confidence in the Waldershire council's control of Lightning Ridge. Hands up, all those in favour.
I think you mentioned wrongly, you've got control over Lightning Ridge. I would like that the motion, that time this in the Waldershire, that you've got a control of Lightning Ridge. What do you mean over the no control of Lightning Ridge? It means you have no Shire in Lightning Ridge.
Under, under slave government.
You can't do that. In other words, Peter, you want, you don't want the Waldershire and Lightning Ridge whatsoever.
That's something I'm close to, Peter, that's up to you, Peter.
But this is what you're trying to get across to people.
Under the slave government, I would like us to have our own autonomy here.
Mr President, I'll make a remembrance to that nation, that we have no confidence whatsoever in Waldershire council.
Any scepters?
And, and a gentleman, received to be appointed.
To the Waldershire. On whether that a vote of no confidence be taken against the Waldershire council and a second by William O'Dowd. That an administrator be set up on central council.
Now let us hope on that.
We take a vote on that.
Can we have any discussion from the floor, for, or con, for that vote?
Mister Chairman, Peter Bruce is a very renowned councillor, and I think he could be the one who can tell us what can happen and what cannot happen, and what is possible, what is not. That's all we need to hear, that Peter Bruce is power of law, and tell us exactly what is good, once again, exactly what is right.
No, we've already heard that.
Peter, it's all very well to say I've heard there's been new evidence in the dearest precise code. And I'd like to reiterate that you've got the bulk, look, don't get me wrong, I haven't got that confidence in the Waldershire council. I've got that little confidence and become that disliked by my other councillors that I've designed for all committees, because I know I haven't got a better chance of getting back on any. That doesn't worry me when I have, I'm in there to do a job. But I'm also, would be, not doing my duty if I didn't tell you that you have a hope in high heaven of getting administrator in that council. If they did make this case, they have seen to have rectified it. I don't say I have it, they have been seen to have rectified it. If you're talking. If you're talking about going alone in this town, that's the new evidence that's been introduced. You haven't got a hope in haze of going alone. The Minister for Local Government is amalgamating areas, not letting them come down into smaller bodies. And I'm not saying for one moment that you couldn't run it back. But let me get this straight to you. Lightning Ridge pays $70,000 a year in rates. If you went alone and you under the Minister for Local Government and try to have a Shire clerk and a Shire engineer there, that's going to cost you a total of 80 grand a year and they have to start putting some money away. Then, then either those blokes are going to dig in the ditches or sweep any streets. We've got five people currently employed here by the Waldershire Council in this town and a cost of an average of $20,000 a year each. So that's another 100 grand, so now you're 120,000 dollars beyond the eight ball. It just loses us to talk about going alone, it just couldn't financially not happen. The only way that the Walder Council keeps going is the fact that they collect a million and quarter dollars a year in rates. And why they're broke is they've kept borrowing because they've kept getting further and further behind and they borrow another loan to patch up last year's mess. Don't get me wrong that I'm, I'm in love with the council and they've realised this now and they're trying to straighten it out. So if they explain that to the Minister for Local Government, there's no way the Walder's going to give you an administrator. If it comes back to the council, the vote of no confidence was moved in for or they're going to do it with the Minister for Local Government who will write and say they've mentioned no specific reasons, they haven't shown where, why, when, how, where it been found. And that's why I'm saying you're better off to censure on something that you can prove and you can prove mismanagement over the water supply system. And then you're getting something. Not a blank of vote of no confidence, I know you're making all Peter good to do. But you might make a difference. And if you like, I'll move an amendment to the vote of no confidence. I'm by having an amendment motion and stand up and repeat it from council and be quite proud to say that I moved. And I'd like to move that we move a censure on the Waldershire Council in their handling of the water supply scheme for Lightning Ridge on the following grounds. The German Ratepayer's meeting of 1982, the rate payers of Lightning Ridge were misled into thinking they were getting a total rate rise of $68, intentionally or otherwise by the council. B, the people for the rate payers of Lightning Ridge are now being asked to pay for the incompetence that the Department of Public Works and the Waldershire Council who did not put enough forward planning into the water supply scheme of 1972. By 1972, we're first one, we're doing a new one now because we didn't pay in 1972. They did not, that we're being asked to pay in 1982 for the council's, council and the public works' mistakes of 1972 in putting, in installing pipes that were one too small, two of the wrong category. Pipes, one that were too small, two that were the wrong category, and three total incompetence in planning, pumping station a mile from the, from the board. Total incompetence in planning, pumping station a mile from the board. One mile from the board. Now there you've got your reasons to go to council.
I'll second that.
I think that you, I've got another thing I'd like to bring up about the sewage when you have the general meeting. I think if you leave that one now, you can, well, if you like, you can, you can go on and in section two. The councils have failed.
The councils.
The councils have failed to follow up a motion which was expressed by the rate payers at a town advising meeting in May of 1982, asking the council to investigate whether or not the correct procedure was followed as far as advertisements, when the sewage, sewage or whatever scheme you like to call it. After when the correct procedure was followed in advertisements and notification to the people when that scheme was installed. Now, just to speak on that briefly, Mr. Chairman, that was carried in this hall here, is that they've been asked to look at that because lots of allegations have been made that have never gone to press. Jack Baker swore that it had and I moved here that it'd been investigated, was carried here, was endorsed by council that'd been carried and from May until now, they haven't done one eye over to check that out. And twice in question time I've asked why and they've put it up in a queue.
And then we had to pay for it already and we can't never afford it.
So, you know, until you get that fact straight for me, whether they did their homework correctly in the first place, you're firing your first bullet when you get that backfire second. They're provable things.
One, one thing I'd like to say about this is the meeting the other day, the engineers stood up and said that the board was put down in 1972 and by 1975, they were fully aware that there was insufficient water for the town of Lightning Ridge. Now, if you go into the Shire Council, that log, they've got a map, a futuristic map of Lightning Ridge there that makes it look something like Paramount. Now, I'd like to ask you people, what has the council done to increase the volume of water since 1975, when they become fully aware of it according to their own statement, up to the present time? The only, the way I see it, the only thing they've done, they've put the rates up from about $28 to $258 or $260. But here they've had eight years to do something about and all they've done is made dearer water. There's no more water than there ever was in 1975. So this is one of their things that we can show as well, the town's grown, if everybody knows the town has grown and would have grown more if it hadn't been for the stop that they're putting on.
Peter, I think we've hardly hatched yet and they're here, we're trying to fly like eagles. Might I suggest that we form a committee? I am concerned personally about my water rates as compared to the old market to undertake commercial enterprises in town. What we are paying for now is the improvement of our water system. Everybody, you're backing from this and I think the users should be, shall we say, called upon to pay proportionate for the water that they use. I, I've been looking into the, the cost of water. To me, for I live as one living, the cost may point oh, oh, four cents a liter. I've been trying to look into how much it costs, shall we say, the caravan park, the new one or the town one or other enterprises in town, how much it costs them per litre of water. I think if we're all going to pay for this improvement of our water system, we should pay on the same rate according to amount of water that we get. Now, I might suggest that we set up some committees. People are concerned about the sewage exercise in downtown. Yeah, I don't know what, but I'm not concerned with it. And I might suggest that you set up, you need to look into this. Get your facts straight before we start making all kinds of censure motions and whatnot, not going quite what we're doing. I would be glad to be on looking into the relevant rates that I pay for water as compared to the rest of the country. I'd be glad to be on that committee. And if there are other people in town who feel that your general rates have increased too much, let's inform a committee on that, let's get our hat all together and run it off in all directions. I think.
That's true, exactly.
Yes, now, we're going to go on with Pete Francis. Motion.
I'll take it.
Before we pass that motion, can I ask you, Peter, how, how do we form another motion to find out exactly what did go on the council according to this motion in the first place? How do we move that we have that council where that president said that they all would have been sacked if it had been a private enterprise? Now, I think that should be investigated and tell us why that money was missing and why we haven't heard who was behind it.
Here, here. Here, here.
That is, I'm sure that is not only in the Lightning Ridge people, it's the talk in the streets in Walder. You know, I've had a lot on there and you have a lot of them all asking the same thing.
Edna, I think it's a good suggestion, I think it's a separate issue of this, but we should go on to another motion.
Yeah, well, I'm just asking you, how could you put that motion and have that investigated?
I'd move a motion that the public relations of this council, not only in Lightning Ridge, the whole of Shire, at an all-time level and we've asked the chairman of the council, they've made a full and comprehensive statement how the council came to get in such a poor financial plot.
That's fair, you can't.
That's how, that's how.
That should be a separate motion.
But I think that should be a separate motion, that's how I think it should be handled.
Is there anybody that we can appeal to investigate the financial affairs of the council?
The chairman, there was a motion on the books.
Yes.
We are in the wrong category, in three, total. Incompetence, in, in the fine from the, from the board, one mile from the board.
And what's the chairman, my, I don't want to take the floor all day. I think that's what you're trying to do about this meeting. You're not making noise and tell the Walder Council you're unhappy with them and these are the reasons. Then, as Jack Silman said, you've got to have committees, you've got to then go along with other motions to rectify this. And I think Jack's not advised about having a committee to investigate things and whatever wants to know, how do we find out? There are other motions that you take here today. Like, there's one motion I'd like to see passed and that is that the council will be asked to stop procrastinating and reaching, procrastinating and reaching agreement with the Lumillo Water Trust in order that they can be issued a licence for this board out here. It came out that they never had a licence for the board in investigations. That board is unregistered at the present time.
Why can't we move it on? By law, can we move it on?
Well, no, by law, what you should do now is after you've defeated or carried this motion that's before the chair, then move on to motions that you want answers from the council for and directions you should be given. You should, you should be telling them, get on with the job, get an agreement with the board trust and tell the Minister for Water Resources and your local member to issue that licence out there, not tomorrow but yesterday, so that one member, how much pumping they put in or how much they enlarge your pipes, until you get a licence from the Water Resources Commission in Sydney, you can't pump the one we were to stick to. And they've procrastinated and buttered around for six months. And they've got a reason in principle with the Lumillo Board Trust. They should be now sending tele话说 to the Minister for Water Resources saying, we want that licence so we can get on and improve the water.
But why can't we take up that, that's the one, move that, move that first?
No, we haven't moved the others, the original motion that Peter put up. We haven't moved.
We want, we want the original motion moved, it's bad.
You got rid of that?
All right, can we fight it later, finish the motion?
Oh, only fight.
Only fight. All those against it?
Should be an investigation into that or an ex-malice and as why they should have been sacked and why weren't they sacked if they were incompetent. Now, how I would put that motion to have investigated, I'm not quite sure. How would you put that, Peter?
Well, Edna, I think, you know, you don't, I don't see the day of the end, Peter, or the end. I think we're starting the day to have investigated. While it does it to get backwards and forward, back from the council to keep the evidence effectively when you move on to the case of government, to the local government. And I'd like to see somebody move, I don't want to be moving a ball.
No, I'll move.
I'd like to see somebody move today that the Walder Council be advised, it's the opinion of this meeting, public relations in the whole, in the whole of Shire are at an all-time low and we, and we believe it's time that the chairman came out and made a full and comprehensive statement giving facts and figures as to why the Waldershire Council is in such a dire financial plot. Now, if you're not satisfied then when you get that letter back, that's when you start going to the Minister for Local Government. But you, why would you give people that thought and hate themselves?
We want to find out why that statement was made by the chairman.
History and what happened and I, I'll be uh, the orders partly responsible because in May 1981, in May 1981, the orders sounded absolutely nothing wrong. In January, in December of 1980, something like, we're in the 82 now. In December of 1981, the council had given the facts and figures on the next year's budget. And in those facts and figures, I noticed one figure of a hundred, of 10,000. So if it's on unpaid loans, I knew this couldn't be right. And I asked Mr. Baker a question of the council at that time. Why was it only $10,000 in unpaid loans? And he said, oh, actually just one unpaid loan was building, and he passed it off for that. And going home in a car that night, I thought, I didn't see anything anywhere else about unpaid loans, but it got parked. So, we budgeted then for a deficit, a surplus of about 20, 25,000 dollars. In January, Mr. Baker told me that due to interest rates going up, we would now owe a deficit of about 25,000 dollars a year. That was accepted. In February, we got a note to say the deficit would be $48,000 for, for Mr. Baker because the council had lost three or four workers' compensation cases and the GIL had bucked their premium. In, that was in March. In May, Mr. Baker sent a note over to the council that he was taking a three-month-long service leave and the deficit had been $108,000. So that was when the chairman jumped in, give the chairman his due and said this has been a total mess and that's when he made a presidential statement. And he ordered what he terms to do, nothing else but looking to where and why the facts and figures went wrong. And while he terms and project the deficit through to December of last year. What he terms did nothing else for a month. And one of the things that came out was the one that I questioned for $10,000, that alone should have been 160 grand. So $150,000 mistake in that figure alone. Uh, but where the biggest mistakes have been caused were works that had been not completed the year before weren't budgeted for in 1983 but were proceeding, were going ahead. But the money had been spent and the works hadn't been done. And that was another one of them. And this was what led to the investigation.
Excuse me, Peter, you took 82 or 83 now?
I took 83 now, this note came over in 1983 and it was all supplied.
But Peter, you must have a council meeting, surely some of the councillors must have listened and realised like you that there was something wrong.
Well, nobody really.
With the interest? Or do they just sit in there and let Jack Baker just say, no, that's right and pave the way like you said? I mean, as councillors, they should have a blue, go up on his top.
Some of the things I'm about to say this afternoon, I suppose are like, the people should know. I found a very big difference when David Corbett came to the chair to when Alan Fred was the chairman. Because when Alan Fred was the chairman and you started the process down, the ex-Shire clerk, Alan Fred would say, put that in writing, if you can't prove it, shut up. And you have to sit down and shut up. When David Corbett, when David Corbett came to the chair and you started to question Jack Baker, he got annoyed with you and said he didn't want to answer that, David Corbett used to say to him, but you must answer and put it on the map. And that was the beginning, that was the beginning of the end.
Well, that's you that did it all of a sudden.
Particularly when Peter Wickman came on to the Shire, Peter Wickman's an accountant by trade. And Peter Wickman wasn't very happy about quite a few things and started following them up. And one of the other things that happened was nobody had slaved to the Minister for Education for three years for subsidy for the Walder Hospital, which the council were entitled $74,000 for and were shown on the books and approved. entitled to seventy-four thousand dollars for, and was shown on the books as a credit. And because they hadn't applied for it, the Minister for Education now, they've got six thousand dollars in that funds line, and that's what they're going to get.
So virtually, the council was run by Mr. Baker and helped by Mr. Fred, and the councillors didn't run it?
I wouldn't imply, I wouldn't imply.
You wouldn't imply that.
I wouldn't imply that Mr. Fred was in it, but what I would imply, I stand up to say, that the councillors had to accept the facts that Jack Baker gave them, and when you've got a ownership with seventy-four thousand dollars owing to you, that was shown as a credit, you had no way of pressing it.
So virtually, all you voted for the councillors were useless. The councillors were useless, they just went into a meeting. That was run by Jack Baker, really?
Virtually. Until it started to come out, and here, but I will say that, and I say this in a proper tone, a lot of people feel like, he chewed the egg and chewed the egg, he never got a settlement. And if it wasn't until Peter Whitman came on the Shire, and then I got it, when I, when those two sort of established, giving a bit of curry up, I got a bit of courage, and when the fears for that question started to be asked, it all, it all poured out, it all came out. Whether anybody else can give enough to tell you that the facts are, as they happen, Mr. Baker said he never got a hearing, and he's, he's incidentally proved guilty, but I don't think the chicken put the whole box and die on Mr. Baker. Because as you say, there were twelve councillors there, not one of them, but they found the blame, and you've got the firm of auditors that had access to the book. The party of the councillors haven't got access to the book.
So it really had to be, as he said, as that president said, the seniority members of that council should have been sacked.
Well, I am very ahead of council. He can't, he finds out.
And council, $2,000 a month, it's never been given. Now, you can work out how much that would have cost.
Forty thousand.
No, that's only forty thousand for the witness. You've got $10,000 a week for three weeks for a hearing, that's another third. That's another third. That's another third and a half, not it. Jack Baker got what he was entitled to, what he put in, in by way of his contributions to his superannuation. The only payment that he got out of that over and up that he shouldn't have got, which was a payment of eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars. But listen to this, between when that would have gone to court, had it gone to court, and the time they settled, the barrister, because advising the council, Jack Baker applied that in lieu of sick leave, and they decided to settle out of court and give him that, rather than go to court with all those costs, because the barrister advised them that there was a hearing before arbitration from the Shire Municipal Workers Association or whatever place to get their hearing at, for people to be paid in lieu of sick leave they haven't taken. And since then, that's become law. And it would have, the hearing would have dragged on, and it would have been law before the hearing was over, he would have got it anyway. But that's the only money that he got, that he didn't have any entitlement to, that he paid in to his superannuation.
It would have cost a lot of money.
Where they cost the council five or six thousand dollars for breaking.
Did he get long service leave?
Yes, he was entitled to long service leave.
Nobody gives long service leave that they're bloody to prove. Nobody.
But how much did he take home?
He took home, I believe, including his eighty thousand dollars, 159,000.
And then no one buys the council with the debts that it's been.
Had he, well, actually, what you've got to realise is, and I'll, I'll give you four marks for this, there's a superannuation fund that the council couldn't put away, whoever he was paying for it off. It was the only fund that had, that had a surplus in it.
So maybe another word, Jack Baker ripped us off. That's right, Mr. Baker has been running the Shire for years and has ripped the community off, and I still think he should pay. And I still think there should be something done by the council.
Well, the other, what I'd like to say is, at the time, when I could see the council in a momentous situation, I voted for it to pay off, because it was ratepayer money, we were throwing money that we couldn't recover. But since then, I've moved in council, in the Wilder Council, that nobody ever again, we go to the Minister for the Local Government over it, and the Shire Association, you know, files it now, take it up, that nobody ever again be allowed to appeal under section 21 under the Arbitration Commission, that all potential sackings, incidentally, Mr. Baker, this means all potential sackings, whoever they are, shall revert back to section 99, where once approved, you're going to use that. But in this situation, it couldn't be fixed. Wouldn't, it couldn't have happened, because that wasn't in section of the appeal.
Actually, that's the law, not justice.
And I, I thought for the last 12 months that this should have been told to Peter.
Why wasn't it? Why wasn't it?
And not my job to do, if I were the chairman of that council, I think it's my job to go out round the towns and tell them the exact, the exact facts. And because the chairman hasn't gone around, the chairman, quite frankly, is dead scared that he got up and said the things I said today would imply that Jack Baker was guilty, and he would be frightened, that Jack Baker would slap him in the face just like that, and he would tell him, oh, you're still a very angry man.
How are you going to? Very well. I, I believe, I believe that motion should be carried, and I feel that it should pay further if we don't get properly.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question regarding Mr. Silman's inquiry about the water rates? Maybe Mr. Peter Fred, this might draw some light on my question. I think that everyone here that is required is charged on unimproved land, is a certain percentage of the water. Now, if Mr. Silman brought that question, I don't think they're very hard to find out how much the other business houses in the township invited each other to take. And the second thing I would like to know, who is paying for the water that the rest of the community is using? Maybe the pump near the carom plant that is running 24 hours, that comes with a downstream duct. I would like to know who's paying for that water?
My mother.
My mother.
And the Wilder Council, and we would like them to make a full and comprehensive statement as to their financial facts and figures, and in their financial facts and figures, and it was put by Edna Fuller and seven of them by John Withers.
That's right. And, and explaining how the council can be defined.
How that would be, yeah, in dire financial strike, yes. You have to take a vote on it. Who do I call?
You have to call forward to the person. All lives in favor, have you called it, Michael? All lives again. Peter, I'm on a motorbike, the lights don't work, I'm on my old truck road down today. I'll have to leave very shortly, but there's one other thing I'd like to see you carry before I leave, and that's a motion asking the council to stop procrastinating about getting the bore licence out. You asked me a question, can we get it? If we applied for that bore licence as townspeople, the Water Resources Commission would say there's two applicants for it, I landed over the Department of the Western Lands, and they'll hold a local land board inquiry, and that would take two years to see if one of us involved in council, you're only going to hold that. You better have to tell the Wilder Council to get off their butts and get it.
But wouldn't that be better to open the minutes of the local government, though, instead?
Oh, no. If you tell them to get off their butts and get it, but at the same time, forward the letter to Moll Murray, you don't remember, asking him to support the council getting on. I think once they get that, they'll get off their backs and get on with it. Don't worry about them not being wary, I'm fully aware of the value of the Ratepayers Association. On the Brewhana council, when I was on it, and they got a good Ratepayers Association, they did what Jack Childman said, investigated a bit, they didn't go off half-cocked, they knew what they were talking about, what, the Brewhana Shire council picked their footwork up and over, every council legal.
But they're doing.
The Ratepayers Association.
The Ratepayers Association, I fully agree with you. And I hope before Monday this afternoon, before I go, I would like to see you write to the local council and ask them to stop procrastinating, come to a agreement with the nerve of the trust, and as quickly as possible, get the licence for this bore out here to enable water supply in this town to be upgraded. Could I, could I ask? I'm going to ask something. Who's been, who's been the person that's got the licence to put the bore down?
No, no.
We're going to die.
There's no way you can handle it. You couldn't pay wages in one thing.
Anyway, put that right, she can't even cover up. Mr. Chairman, again, I'd like to see somebody put that motion, I'll tell you why. Not that I'm not frightened to move it in council, not that I'm frightened to support it in council, but I know what someone is saying in the council, oh, you put those words in their mouth, you move the motion. I'd like to see the motion come from the, please.
No, they're alive. I provided, and you can take it.
Haven't got a motion on books, though, have we? We voted on the other. Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, favor.
Um, I'm waiting.
Favor, right.
Our vote is put a motion in the segment by Mr. Munir, that the Wilder Shire Council stop procrastinating, and get on with the job, and produce the Lumillo bore license.
Reaching a deal, reaching a agreement.
Recent agreement with the Lumillo bore.
Reaching a agreement with the Lumillo bore, cut.
Yeah. And then what have you got?
Uh, and immediately apply to the Minister for Water Resources to the re-establishment of the licence.
Now, I've got to, well, you didn't tell me the Water Resources.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Got it off of the Water Resources.
Yeah, but we're going to council, and I asked them to immediately write to the Water Resources Commission to re-establish.
But wouldn't they, in their job, have to do that without us?
I know they have to do it. Out of the last six months, I've asked the question on every second month on three different occasions of the engineer, why he hasn't done it, and he said he's still negotiating with the Lumillo Board Council.
And that's all he gets, the same answer.
That's all he gets, is the same answer. But if they get that letter from, they get that letter from this, they get that letter from this public leaders.
You annualise from the, like, from the Lumillo bore. Who do we write to? How do you write to the water?
You ask them to write to the Water Resources Commission.
Water Resources Commission.
To re-establish the licence in order that the work can proceed.
Do you establish laws?
In order that the work can proceed. It's currently, it's can't proceed. That's it, that's it, you know, there's one other little one I've got before I go, Mr. Chairman, you're going to grant me that in doubt. After you pass this one, the one other little one I've got, if you grant me that in doubt. It's impossible, because it's not lawful, because it's been passed by the Minister for the Local Government, the ordinance has been set off. But there is something you can do, you can write to the council and say, considering the injustices, the cost of the water supply scheme to Lightning Region, would you, would we, we request the council, in the event that any money becoming available for unemployment relief, that that be directed towards the construction of the new water supply scheme, and the amount of money saved against the Lightning Ridge Waterlands. The amount of money saved, saved against the Lightning Ridge Waterlands. Now, it's quite clear that there is going to be money available for unemployment relief. And if there is, and they spent thirty-four thousand dollars on the construction of that pipeline with unemployment relief, then that amount of money could be saved on what goes into the Lightning Ridge Water Supply Fund.
What is it? You wrote to the.
Right to the Shire clerk.
Referring to the money available for unemployment.
Saying, I'm saying that any money, considering the injustices to the Ratepayers of Lightning Ridge, over the water supply scheme, we request the council make any money available for unemployment relief be directed towards that scheme, and any money so saved be credited against the scheme.
I can't see the side of you.
Well, I will if they, they set so much money aside, so they're charging us three hundred.
You're not supposed to write that.
Yeah, I know, yeah. The water that be directed towards that scheme.
Be directed towards that scheme, so instead of, and any money so saved, which would be money saved for paying the unemployment. Be credited against the Lightning Ridge Water Supply Fund. And that's the only hope, and it's a very. Well, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, but I suppose I have a gift to the gab, and if God gives it to you, it's up to you to use it, help yourself, please. And I said that when I was three years old, my mother gave me all day supper, most kids would live if I said to them, "Tort."
Jeez, I never thought of it.
Robert's birthday.
I'm a bit on there.
Your birthday, Bob, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-eighth of February, what's the year, 1983?
Eighty-three.
Okay, and who's the other, who's the other Larricans on this tape?
No one, never mind with the other Larricans, we're on top of the three-mile hill, aren't we?
Yeah.
Right, now, Robert.
And Bruce, Ted Cram.
Bob, where is Turner's, the famous Turner's claim?
Just to the right of the tree.
Right of the tree, there. And who are we joining them?
Turner's and Medley, Medley, they're a job.